This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the August 16th, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present this evening. I would ask you to all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on our township website for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public and virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board for any non-agenda items. You come to the microphone and give us your name.
Chris Pichel. I just wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners and the township staff for their support of the drill disaster we had last week. I'm sure Chief Jordan will talk later. South Whitehall in the past 11 years had seven major drills that involved resources from outside of the township, far ahead of any other township in the county. And I just want to thank you for your continued support.
Thank you very much for that comment. And we do appreciate all of the emergency support agencies that partnered with the township, including our own police department and fire departments. Is there anyone else from the public? Yes, if you've come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
My name is Don Sheetsley. I live at 1411 Hampton Road. And I want to do a shout out for Herb and the cleanup proof that he's been doing. Our neighborhood's been a mess with all the trees and stuff. And my tree lasted 47 years. It came down Sunday. It woke me up. I thought somebody was breaking in. And one of my neighbors shot it all up. Through Monica's help, they tried it at 10:30 Monday morning, ground all the trees up. An hour later, swept everything up. I could do a really, really good job for the neighbor that was really in a mess. It's the worst I have ever seen. One more thing, then I'll... As you all know, I remember nights of Columbus, right? And we sponsored a charity golf tournament. Like I said, all five commissioners donated to the charity golf tournament, nights of Columbus, three purchase holes. So Diane, Monica, and Jacob will have signs on the holes that will say, Diane Kelly, present, South Whitehall Township Commissioners. You'll be... Oh, you will have signs out in front. And I just appreciate the help that everybody's doing on a good call. If anyone else wants, I brought some more copies tonight. If we wanted to have Zater still not done, or if you want to... Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to approach the board this evening? Is there anyone online? Dave? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, I'll move on to Agenda Item 5, which is approval of our Board of Commissioners meeting minutes from the August 2nd, 2023 meeting. They've been distributed in advance to the board for your review. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, ordinances. We have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 2 General Legislation, Chapter 336, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, General Parking Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township to amend Section 336-33, Parking prohibited at all times in certain locations, to add a portion of Chapman's Road on the west and east sides of the street, specifically on the west side, 190 feet south of the center line of Chandler Way, on the east side, 200 feet north of the center line of Wrestler Drive, and 215 feet south of the center line of Wrestler Drive, providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. During the Wednesday, June 21st Board of Commissioners meeting, the township approved moving forward with the installation of four LED streetlights on Chapman's Road in between Chandler Way and Applewood Drive, as well as eight no parking signs on Chapman's Road. The draft ordinance is necessary to legally implement the no parking restriction. Approval was then received from the board during the July 5 regular meeting to move forward with advertising the draft ordinance. The ordinance was advertised in the July 26 issue of the Parkland Press and sent to the Lehigh County Department of Law on July 20. The ordinance is ready for adoption. The board should be aware that no members of the public have commented on this ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this ordinance? Any from the public? Is there anything online? No questions? Okay. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance amendment to Chapter 336, Article 4, Parking Restriction on portion of Chapman's Road and on the west and east sides of the street?
So moved.
A second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6B, we have an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall Township, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and adopting an amended purchasing policy and to provide for a repealer clause, retention of rights to enforce severability clause, and an effective date. And I'll ask Tom Petrucci to again present this agenda item.
Thank you. So it has been six years since the purchasing policy has been updated. Making modifications to the policy is necessary as the township evolves and grows. The purchasing and executive departments have updated the South Whitehall Township purchasing policy, and it was previously reviewed, commented on by both the Board of Commissioners as well as the Township Solicitor. So the policy needs to have an ordinance in order to adopt and confirm legally the new purchasing policy. So the main revisions to the policy are summarized as follows. Establish clear goals to which employees must adhere to. Establish a code of conduct that is consistent with the revised code of conduct recently adopted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Provides for the use of procurement cards, and that's to be confirmed. A separate policy that would need to be adopted by the board, and it is on the agenda as well tonight. Revises the criteria for approving sole source and emergency purchases. And basically increases the thresholds for purchases requiring quotations, also purchase orders and approvals. And note that these thresholds are still well under the statutory limits of the Commonwealth. It raises the limit of capital purchases to $5,000, noting that the board must still approve capital purchases, and confirms the overall processes for purchase orders, reimbursements, blanket purchase orders, and the use of cooperative purchasing programs like Co-Stars. And finally, provides for the use of a vendor portal through the township's ERP system, and that is also underway. So we are requesting the board approve the adoption of the ordinance that would then, at the same time, approve the amended purchasing policy.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much for bringing this to the board for our review and approval. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I just have a quick comment. This has also been discussed in the Finance Committee meeting for probably the last year and a half. I'm sure you sit in on most of those. Not at every meeting, but on a couple of them, it's been discussed, and the need to upgrade this and update this.
Any other board comment?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Yes. I apologize for not having researched the question that I'm coming to the board with this evening. I did look at the ordinance prior. Is there... And I agree with it, but is there a position or positions that are eligible to use this card and those that are not?
So, the purchasing policy just provides for the use of procurement cards. Under direction discussion tonight, we have the procurement card policy.
I jumped the gun. Yep. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other board comment? Any from the public? Nothing? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with adoption of amended purchasing policy ordinance?
I'll make the motion. Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Resolution 7A. We have a resolution extending the conditional final approval granted to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton. Turn this over to our township manager to present.
I will turn it over to Greg Adams.
We will have our planner, Greg Adams, present.
Thank you. This is an application to develop the properties located at 3051 Hamilton Boulevard, 3125 Hamilton Boulevard, 3127 Hamilton Boulevard, and 3141 Hamilton Boulevard. To date, the applicant has received five extensions for the final plan approval. They are currently requesting a three-month extension for the final plan approval and recording deadlines. The applicant to date has satisfied five of the 27 conditions. Two of these conditions, however, are legal protections. Two are required if the plans were being recorded, and one is the requirement to record the plan within 12 months. Therefore, 17 conditions of approval are unaddressed. It is staff's opinion that most of the unaddressed conditions are close to completion, being minor planned cleanups, payment of fees, and minor legal issues. The applicant's team is present to answer any questions, and the applicant has signed the acceptance of the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Greg. Before we move on to any comments from the applicant, I would ask if our engineer had any comment on the plan overall?
I think the plan's in very good shape. Probably over the last six months, there was a lot of outside agency permit approvals that they were obtaining, which they did. So at this point, it's update the plans to list those on the cover sheet, give us a check set, and then we are close to having engineering items done. I know they're working with legal, but I think that from an engineering standpoint, they're done.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you for that update. Are there any questions from any of the board members?
My only question is the same question that I ask every time. I think Dave's... Looks like he's about to ask the same thing.
I ask it every time.
Is three months enough, or would you... Or will you need longer? We want to do six months with a three-month update. That's the same question I ask every time, because I know we've granted five conditions or five extensions at this point. So it's a question I always ask of the applicant.
Yes, please. Just make sure that the light is on. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Sarah Hogan. I'm the attorney for the developer Hotel Hamilton. I'm taking over for Bill Malcomas. He's passed the baton to me. So I just wanted to let you know that we actually thought that one month was going to be enough, and it was suggested that we ask for three. And the reason being is that most of the engineering has been done, and the remaining items are basically just the legal agreements and the security, the letter of credit from the bank. And they're just doing an appraisal, and it should be done within a month. So we really do think that the three months is sufficient at this time.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. Any other questions? Commissioner Hodges?
I do have a comment, and please bear with me. I have asked this before, too. I know you have assured me that you will physically assess and make sure that the King George is in good condition. I just ask you, as we go through another three months and we go through the process, to just assure me that... Okay. Okay. Thank you for bearing with me. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
If there's no more questions from the board, is there any feedback from the public? Any comments? Is there anyone online? Dave? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to grant a three-month extension, extending conditional final approval to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton? Moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Good luck with your completion of this plan. Moving on to Agenda Item 7B, we have a resolution appointing Key Codes Inspection Agency as an alternate residential building code inspector for South Whitehall Township, and I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. So Township Administration has identified a need to utilize Key Codes Inspection Agency as a third-party alternate residential building code inspector for South Whitehall. Barry Isit is the primary residential building code inspector. The resolution is written in such a way to give officials the flexibility in utilizing key codes for these services as per the administrative needs of the township. Upon review of the relevant residential inspection services fee schedules for both Barry Isit and Key Codes, while there are differences, both entities are generally within a low statistical threshold for costs when they are providing these services. I did go through and provide an example for your reference for that. Third-party fees are paid for by the permitee pursuant to the relevant fee schedule. So I seek a motion to approve the resolution as submitted.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions on this agenda item? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution appointing Key Codes as our alternate residential building code inspector?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, motions. 8A, we have a motion to reject bid received number 2023-09 for the Brickyard Road Wall Demolition Project, and I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to please present this agenda.
Good evening. Two bids were received and opened on Thursday, July 27, 2023, the Brickyard Wall Retaining Demolition Project. This bid was advertised in local publication as required by law. Fifty potential bidders downloaded and received documents from Penn Bid website. The project is to remove a retaining wall from the side of a home on Brickyard Road for drainage purposes. As previously stated, two bids were received, one of which from Washington General Contractors should not be recognized, as the contractor did not attend the mandatory pre-bid meeting held on July 20, 2023. The other bidder, Semel Escavating, did not supply a plan to remove this wall, which was required to be submitted with a bid response due to the wall's proximity to the dwelling. We are requesting the board to reject the bids received and grant permission to rebid this project.
Very good, Herb. Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this?
Commissioner Hodges? Yeah, I have two questions. Herb, Semel and Washington, were they told why they were not accepted? Were they told why their bid?
Yes, Donna will notify them. And I did talk to Washington General. He called me with questions. I actually told him not to submit it because it was a requirement to be at the pre-bid meeting, and he didn't come to that.
And at this point, does that wall, you said at a previous meeting, it was leaning a little bit. Is that in any kind of danger, or is it still?
It hasn't moved anymore. It is stable, but we do have to get it before it is too late.
Okay. Thank you. And Herb, do you expect that this project will be done this fall? Having you rebid, do we have enough time to get it?
Yes, we will. We will be getting into leaf season, so we will, in the beginning, only have to put the leaf suction machines out, so that will give us enough time to get through this project. And just so everyone knows, the bid that would have been awarded if he would have submitted the plan was $25,000, a little bit more than that. We do have $250,000 budgeted for this job. So that bid came in under, but that's not our only expense. Public Works is going to do the rest of the work, but that was lower than what we thought.
Very good. Any other board comment? Any questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion granting permission to reject bid number 2023-09 for the Brickyard Road Wall Demolition Project and granting permission to rebid said project?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, we have a motion to authorize the purchase of two temporary speed humps on Trexler Boulevard and Highland Street. And Tom, will you present on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as the board is aware, the Public Safety Commission held a meeting on Monday, June 5 at the Township Municipal Complex to discuss and review possible traffic calming safety improvements for both Trexler Boulevard and Highland Street. The traffic calming measures reviewed were based on previous speeding complaints submitted to township officials. The public meeting was well attended, and the key takeaways from that meeting are listed as follows. Speeding is acknowledged problem. The local technical assistance program and the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission representatives confirmed that the installation of traffic calming measures along Trexler Boulevard are projected to impact Highland Street. LTAP pointed out that the installation of speed humps on Trexler Boulevard will slow vehicle speeds, but may also decrease vehicular volume on that street. This may, in those cases, cause pass-through traffic to shift from one street to another. Residents in attendance generally express strong support for traffic calming measures to be installed on both roadways. Following the meeting, township staff, as indicated during the Public Safety Commission meeting, inspected the preliminary and proposed locations for the installation of speed humps. Residents with properties indoor or driveways located in or around the proposed speed humps received both an informative letter and a map depicting the location of this proposed speed humps. Township staff marked out the proposed location of the speed humps with white paint, and the advanced warning signs were marked out with pink paint. In the interim period, township did receive comments from residents, which included both strong support as well as concerns expressed regarding possible stormwater impacts to both Trexler and Highland. In response to the report of stormwater impacts, the township engineer was engaged to review both roadways and did report that areas of both roadways would require special considerations to ensure that this installation of speed humps would not further impact either roadway from a stormwater perspective. Township Public Works, since even that timeframe, has observed direct stormwater impacts following two separate significant rainfall events that occurred on both July 9 and August 7 of this year. So the roadways, the impact to the roadways included ponding and areas where water is getting trapped along the side of the road or in front yards due to the existing flat profile of the roadways. So while we think the speed humps may not necessarily impact the roadway during normal rainfall events, when you get into these situations of microburst storms, the speed humps could and likely will further compound these existing issues. So we vetted a number of different options for your consideration. What we felt could be a possible solution was to explore installing temporary speed humps at locations along Trexler and Boulevard and moving them around and observing the impacts to the roadway. So we can engage both the intended and unintended impacts of installing the speed humps while not deteriorating the structural integrity of the roadway. So it's very important to note that the temporary speed hump must still meet PennDOT's specifications set forth in Publication 383, which is the Traffic Calming Handbook. So preliminary cost estimates were obtained for the speed humps, and we do not anticipate that they will exceed $5,000 each, including required signage. So we're in the threshold where we would really only need to obtain three quotes, which we're in the process of obtaining three quotes. So we conclude that we would recommend the purchase of two temporary 10.5 feet long by 18 feet with 3-inch speed humps, including required signage, that will allow the township to attempt to evaluate and assess the expressed concerns of residents regarding speeding, while still considering and attempting to assuage the expressed concerns received from residents that were confirmed by township staff and the township engineer regarding possible stormwater impacts. Township staff also notes that the temporary speed humps will be able to be reused in accordance with the township's recently adopted traffic calming policy at multiple locations in the future. So it's not as though we can buy these. It's just for these roadways. So we feel they will help us to observe real data in the future as well on other locations. So authorization is requested to approve the purchase of the two speed humps in accordance with PennDOT traffic calming policy at a price not to exceed $10,000 and following the township's procurement policy with respect to obtaining price quotations and the approval of a purchase order requisition.
Tom, thank you for that explanation and very thorough review of this matter. I'm just curious if we were to place the temporary speed humps, and we've got a rain situation like we've had recently, are these speed humps easy for the township to go out and move?
Yes.
So that it's not going to cause greater issues when there's flooding?
They can be removed at a moment's notice.
Yeah, they're just bolted down. There's an anchor that goes in the ground, so we could go out with an impact gun real quick, unbolt them, throw them in the back of a pickup truck.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I attended two of the public safety meetings where this was discussed, and the room was quite crowded, as Tom said. One comment I do want to bring up that Tom mentioned, at the end of the one meeting, he asked if anybody at that meeting was against this, and not one person came forward and said they were. So I think the residents were very happy that we had the meeting and that the township is acting so quickly on the speed humps. And I think the idea of going with the temporary is, as you pointed out, is a great idea as a starter. Thank you for your effort on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hodges?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Yes, I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Kennedy mentioned. I think you did an exhaustive effort to solve or attempt to solve a problem, and yet take everyone's concerns into consideration. This is an amazing potential solution. So I have a nerdy question. How high are these speed humps?
Yeah, like I think they're 3 to 4 inches.
Just 3 inches? Okay. So if we have a 6-inch snowfall, how would our snowplows know where the speed hump is? Speed, yeah, speed hump.
The plow can glide right over the top of it.
Since it's only 3 inches.
But since they are made of rubber, we will remove them if they are calling for a plowable snow, so we don't destroy them. Because there is a little lip, but the plow, you got to remember, does sit a quarter inch higher than the McAdam.
Right.
So it should just glide over the top of it. But for a safety caution, yes, you'll have the speed hump sign there, but you will not be able to see the markings on the road. So we will remove those ahead of time.
Okay. And hopefully by then, we'll have data to show whether these are properly placed or necessary, or something else might be better.
Correct.
Okay. So there's... Okay. So our Public Works workers will know where these speed bumps are?
Yes, because they will install them.
Yeah.
And there'll be advanced warning signage as well.
Okay. Thanks for commenting my nerdy question.
Commissioner Hodges?
I do have a question as well. Do you have any idea on how long that observation period will be? Is it going to be based on rain? Is it going to be just a segment of time?
We hope to have it done ASAP, and then it'll continue through the end of this year's paving season, for lack of a better term, to the end of October, before the onset of the winter season.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you for addressing this, that those two streets have been a real thorn for many years, a real hazard. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a difficult balance to try to weigh all the concerns. So I want to thank everyone who worked on this at the township, that we really did try to come up with a way that we were putting in something that's not going to impact people while still trying to solve an ongoing problem.
Any other board comment this evening? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the purchase of two temporary speed humps at a price not to exceed $10,000, following the township's procurement policy with respect to obtaining price quotations and the approval of a purchase order?
Make a motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Tom, thank you, Herb, and all staff who've worked on this matter and coming to this conclusion. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, we have a motion to approve the public Moving on to agenda item eight C, we have a motion to approve the public comment period. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Southway Hill Township Planning Commission Comment Period, and Transmittal to adjoining municipalities for the Public to Public Waste Water Disposal System Transfer Act 537 Plan Update Draft. Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. So approval was received from the Board of Commissioners during, during your May 5th, 2023 meeting to proceed with the first step of the Act 537 Official Plan Update by file, by filing the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, Public to Public Waste Water Disposal System Transfers Act 537 Planning Requirements Checklist. Township Administration, in conjunction with SSM Group as a consultant, is now ready to remit the draft Act 537 Official Plan, which is enclosed for reference to the board, in order to receive approval to commence the public comment portion of the project. So the public, public, public to public system transfer update was prepared in order truly to officially recognize the transfer of the Southway Hill Township Authority to Southway Hill Township and address any previous planning that has not yet been implemented for the Township Service Area. It is important to note that this update is limited in scope and does not attempt to establish future sewer planning areas, as further articulated in Chapter Four, which is Future Growth and Land Development. This process is applicable to situations where a public entity intends to transfer the responsibilities of one municipal entity to another. In this case, that was effectuated by ordinance back in 2017. This is the, the final step in that process. SSM Group, as mentioned, was utilized for technical guidance. Township staff included a project team comprised of executive, community development, and public works personnel, who all assisted with compiling all the voluminous background information and the drafting of mapping that was required to the, for the project. Special thanks to Dave Manhart for drafting of the mapping, for Herb and Mike Elias in compiling the information. So everyone did a great job there. Jamie Laura for SSSM Group is in attendance tonight to answer any questions you may have about the plan. Before we get to that, the official action that's to be requested is summarized as follows. So authorize the commencement commencement of the required public comment period for this project, including the filing. A 30-day general public comment period requiring public notice, including advertisement and dissemination on township website. The municipalities must advertise the plan for public comment and officially adopt the plan by resolution prior to submitting the plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for approval. Provided the Board of Commissioners authorize approval, the public comment period will start following advertisement as soon as practicable. Second, a 60-day comment period is required for the Southway Hill Township Planning Commission. The plan must be reviewed by the municipal planning commission, and their comments must be addressed prior to submitting to the plan to the P A D E P. And then there's a 60-day comment period required for the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. So that plan must be reviewed by the county planning commission, and their comments must be addressed prior to submitting to the plan, the plan to the D E P. And finally, we're going to provide a 45-day comment period for adjoining municipalities. As indicated, the township must address all comments received prior to approving the plan, adoption, resolution, and submitting the plans to be P A D E P, who has a period of six months to review said plan. So with that, are there any questions for Jamie Laura?
Thank you, Tom, for that presentation. I'll open it up to the board if there's any questions from any of the board members. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Nothing online. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion for the public comment period? Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Southway Hill Planning Commission, and Transmittal to adjoining municipalities for the Public to Public Waste Water Disposal System Transfer Act 537 Plan Update?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item eight D, we have a motion requesting permission to extend contract number 2020-06 with Patriot Workwear LLC for one last term of one year for the furnishing and delivering of police uniforms. And I'll ask our police chief, Plendorni, to present this agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We're here tonight to just give some background on the reference bid was initially awarded in 2020, has been extended for the last two years due to the pricing increases of material and textiles, and due to the market right now, the level inflation, we feel that due to these cost increases, that utilizing the last extension would be the best interest of the township, as the vendor has agreed to hold the same pricing for another year. So we would respectfully request permission to extend the above referenced contract to Patriot Workwear LLC for the last term of one year.
Thank you, chief. Open up to the board if there's any questions or comments. Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion granting permission to extend said contract with Patriot Workwear LLC for one more year with no increase in pricing?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion in two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item nine, correspondence and information items. I'll turn it over to our township manager to review boards and.
Thank you. There's quite a few meetings coming up and events. Wednesday, August 16th, 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners, that's tonight. Thursday, August 17th, 7:30 PM, Planning Commission. Friday, August 18th, 7:00 PM, Movie in the Park. Monday, August 21st, 6:00 PM, Board of Commissioners Special Meeting Regarding the 2024 Waste and Recycling Disposal Contract. It's very, very important, anyone who's interested in hearing about the next contract, please attend the meeting or call into it. Tuesday, August 22nd, 6:00 PM, Southway Hill Township Landscapes Plan Meeting Number Three, which the topic is natural resources. Wednesday, August 23rd, 7:00 PM, Zoning Here and Born. Friday, August 25th, 7:00 PM, is Concerts in the Park, Large Flowerheads. Monday, August 28th, is 10:00 AM Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Tuesday, August 29th, 6:00 PM, Southway Hill Township Landscapes Plan Meeting Number Four, Historic Resources. Monday, September 4th, the offices are closed for Labor Day holiday. Wednesday, September 6th, 7:00 PM, is the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Tom. And just as an update to the Planning Commission, I believe we had one removal from the agenda for tomorrow evening.
Yes, Ridge Farms Phase 1B has tabled formally and will be on the September Planning Commission agenda, not tomorrow night.
Very good. Thank you for that update. Moving on to agenda item 10, direction discussion. 10A, we have review of procurement card policy draft. Tom, if you'd present that agenda item?
Thank you. So as discussed earlier this evening, with the adoption of the purchasing policy, which authorized the use of a procurement card policy, so we, we, as township are asking for direction and discussion on the draft procurement policy that was provided in your packets. So procurement cards are essentially credit cards that are then paid for by invoice with township funds. The bank that manages a procurement card will issue payments to payee within days or instantly, while providing monthly invoicing to the township. Procurement cards offer greater cost efficiency over traditionally paid purchase orders while still allowing for security controls, i.e. setting transaction limits and vendor-type restrictions. So to be clear, the only authorized purchases with the use of a procurement card would include the following: emergency purchases, online subscriptions or dues, conference registration, training, where the vendor will not allow the township to be billed, and hotel accommodations to be paid, to be paid in full with the reservation unless not permitted by, by the vendor. So to, to be clear, we're not looking to seek to pay regular bills with a procurement card. We don't think that's advisable at this time. Myself, Herb Bender, and Donna Zacharou, sorry, reviewed this policy and vetted all the particular concerns with, with having these cards. So we see the benefit, but we also sell, see the potential negative drawbacks that we want to make sure that we, we think of ahead of time and limit the exposure. So we, we provided the board the draft procurement card policy, as well as all corresponding forms. After vetting potential vendors, we are recommending that the township utilize the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trusts as the card issuer. That information was enclosed for your review. And at this point, we're, we're asking for your feedback on the policy. And to be clear, the only cardholders would be myself, Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, and then we envision the policy to have, for lack of a better term, ghost cards, which are not assigned to individuals, but we envision them assigned to departments. So then the department heads would be responsible for submitting all the monthly reconciliation reports to the finance director, who would then be the independent reviewer of said reports. And the departments that we would envision having use of the cards would be police, parks and rec, community development, and public works, with police being the primary user of the cards from a departmental aspect, as they are doing more training and attending more conferences than, than other departments.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation, Tom. I'll open it up to the board for questions. And Commissioner Osborne, I think maybe you'd want to start with your question from earlier.
Sure, actually, I have another one.
Okay.
So again, I don't have the policy in front of me, but I read it prior coming to the meeting. So, Tom, what you said about those who are authorized to hold these cards, but then you mentioned ghost cards. Is that part of the policy? And I apologize for asking because I didn't see it.
It's in there, yes. It's a ghost cards. We're going to make that language more tight. We're going to tighten it up to make sure that it clarifies that the ghost cards will be per each department. That was something that we're going to add a little bit.
Okay.
To clarify that what was the intent, because the policy requires monthly reconciliation of the cards. So for example, I, if I have one, I will be submitting receipts for what I've used it for, in accordance with the policy, of course, and then filling out a reconciliation form so that the receipts and the statement of the vendor match what I'm submitting. So that's, and that goes to the finance director, who's the third party who will not have a card, in the sense that it's a neutral person reviewing it, making sure the card's getting reconciled.
So the finance director will not have a card?
Will not have a card.
Not be authorized. My second question is this. So we have this card, which is essentially a credit card.
Yes.
Is the cardholder responsible, personally responsible for the payment of this, or is the township?
The township is. So the way it works is, we receive a statement that, and usually it's like the 26th or the 27th of the month, that we then must pay using the township accounts payable account, which would be reconciled by each line on them. So the pay, the pay, the payee receives their, their funds. The person, the cardholder, is responsible to then submit their, their monthly reconciliation to the township. The township gets a statement. We reconcile what's on the statement versus what's on the receipts, what's on, what's on the monthly reconciliation. We then pay a lump sum to the vendor, which is the card, the card account holder, plig it.
And that was in the draft. Here's, here's just something to consider. So you have, and companies sometimes do this. Yes, you have a card that you can use for organizational business, let's say, but to avoid the possibility that someone abuses this card, they are then held personally responsible for the payment of that card, which organizationally, that doesn't happen if everyone submits, you know, the receipt that you're talking about. But if you have someone who goes rogue and uses his card for unauthorized purposes, it's still going to be accepted, but the township will then be on the hook for unauthorized uses. Just the, you know, just this thought. And, and holding someone personally responsible for the use of the card is, is the township's protection against that while they pay the bill. Just, you know, just.
You could also report it to the card, you know, to plig it as a, as an unauthorized purchase, but what we also.
But you wouldn't know that, though.
Right.
At the time.
At the time.
Yeah.
Well, you also can set limits on where they use the, where they use these cards as well. So for example, if it's, if someone were to go to it to a jewelry store, you know, that could be something that we specifically limit.
Yes, and in, in the draft, you know, policy that you have, you have those categories, but will the company that will be paying these, will they be the watchdog for improper usage?
No, we ultimately will. And then we have to follow our own policies for employee discipline and up to including termination.
You receive a copy of a receipt of the purchase immediately, correct? I know you said you receive a monthly invoice, but you, if someone makes, an employee makes a purchase with the card, the township receives a record of that almost instantly.
You, you can go in and look at it almost instantly. Yes, you can. I believe you can set it up for emails as well.
And will you have a time limit from the time of the purchase, reasonably, how many days before they need to submit for each transaction back to?
Yes, it needs to be done before we receive the statement from the card issuer.
So conceivably, if the statement comes out on the first of the month, someone makes a charge on the second of the month, they could go 30 days before the township would be aware that a transaction occurred?
We can certainly tighten the timeframe. I mean, ideally, with the ghost cards or the department cards, they would have to turn it back into the finance director upon
That's what I was asking, yeah.
upon, you know, use. So, so yes, there would be a shorter time period in those instances. We can clean up the policy to, to confirm that.
And one other follow-up. The policy as written in the draft states five cards, and if I heard you correctly, it would be the township manager, director of operation, and then four department heads?
Correct. We, we identified that actually today.
Okay.
That we need to change it to make sure the ghost cards can't be just floating out there. They need to be assigned to a department.
Accountable to a particular.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Would, would your authority? Value of the card be greater than the ghost card?
No.
They're all the same?
They would all be set. The limit we, we were looking at was $5,000.
Using plig it, they're a statewide agency?
Yes.
So other townships have had experience with these cards, and they're providing, plig it has guidance and
Yes.
suggestions for how to structure this for us.
Yes, I've used them before.
You have, okay.
As a manager.
Okay.
Had no issues.
I just have one follow-up question. From a chain of custody standpoint, and I apologize if I missed this while reading through the policy, does the finance director hold all of the cards at one time, and then an employee in a particular department or department head comes to the finance director and requests use of the card?
Yes.
Or is the card, okay?
Yeah, we don't, we want them stored in the safe when they're not being used.
Another follow-up question, if I may. So the $5,000 limit, that is per card?
Yes.
So if we have 10 cards outstanding, actually, the, the exposure to the township is $50,000 for this example?
Theoretically, but we wouldn't have all of them out at one time. We would only have the, the department cards out on select occasions. So yes, you're correct, but we wouldn't have people using these cards on an ongoing, consistent basis. They would only be using them for a specific reason, and they would have to sign them out each time for those reasons. But yes, you are technically correct.
So, so going off of Brad's question, and maybe this speaks to Tom's point as well, an employee or department head comes to finance, requests the card, says, I need the card for this purpose. They're given the card, they sign it out, and then they turn it back in.
Correct.
Upon completion of the purchase. That answer your?
It does. Perfect. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, my concern in the positive way is, let's say, the, you mentioned the police department may be a, you know, a predominant user of this, this type thing. If, if Chief Dorni, in this case, is limited to $5,000, or let's say $2,000, because someone else spent $3,000, then that would be, you know, kind of like a bottleneck.
Correct. And that's why we, we, it would be per card.
Yes, and I think, you know, the restriction or the condition that Commissioner Roth pointed out, that actually, before you use the card, you have to have permission to use the card. That's an extra protection, right?
Yes, and they have to sign it and receive approval from the finance director and at other times from the township manager as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So when you bring this back to the board, this will be delineated with
Yes.
the purchase card agreement the employee would need to sign. We'll be able to review that.
Yes.
Vet this. Okay.
Yes, and we'll further articulate what we discussed tonight. And this was just the first draft to make sure that any, no one had any major issues with the concept overall. We'll fine tune the language, clarify the intent, make sure all the forms are completely articulated and vetted, and we'll come back to you for formal adoption.
Very good.
The motion.
Commissioner Hodges, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a, a quick comment. The way I understood when I was reading it is there is several checkpoints. You have the, the account holder making the purchase, and then you have the approver who has to sign off, and then the director of finance. So that kind of keeps it in, in check. So.
Yes, we tried to put multiple checks and balances in. We, as township officials, don't, certainly don't want to take on this liability without doing so.
Right. Thank you.
Any other board comment on this topic? Any public comment? So Tom, I think you have what you need from us to move forward.
Yes, thank you very much for the thorough comments.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention for a discussion tonight. Moving on to the second Direction Discussion Item, Review of Recommendation to Utilize a Professional Consultant for the Zoning Ordinance Revamp. Will you be presenting that as well?
Mr. David Manhart will.
Mr. David Manhart, our Director of Community.
So what we have for you to discuss and wanted to bring to your attention is some of the work that we've been doing behind the scenes to move forward with some of the implementation items related to the comp plan, particularly the zoning update. So one of the things that we've done through the process, and, you know, as a professional planner, I'm always looking at latest tools and how I would want to implement a zoning update. So one of the tools that I would really want to use, and I've had experience with it and gone through webinars where we learn about the, it's called ArcGIS Urban. And it's a GIS tool that allows for 3D visualization is really the key. And one of the things I've learned throughout my career is that communication is the key to understanding a plan. And the easiest way that I've found for people to understand plans is oftentimes a 3D rendering or some sort of 3D version of something. I'm sure, you know, we've all had challenges reading plans. So this is one way to kind of make it a little more digestible. So in the research and through these webinars, ArcGIS Urban is really a tool that provides the 3D analysis. It also allows for indicators to be tied to the scenario that gets built out or the development that's getting put into the, into the model. So whether they're economic indicators, greenhouse gas, I mean, there's a list of indicators that we can get built out. So that's really what started this with some of the webinars that I've been sitting in, indicating, you know, leading me down this path of this is really, I think, the tool that we should use moving forward, especially with these zone updates. And there's other pieces to it that we will, if we get our hands on it, you'll be seeing a lot of it. So as we were going through that, we reached out to Esri, which is the company that provides the software. We received a quote from them. While we were waiting for that quote, we reached out to a planning firm that happened to be one of the consultants or the presenters that a lot of the webinars I've gone through, demonstrating ArcGIS Urban, looking at planning and zoning updates. So it's really a planning and GIS firm. Based on my background and, you know, my background with GIS and maps and planning, it's right up my alley. So I think the, this company, Housel Levine, is really a company that, if I were to do a zoning update, I would follow their methods. And they are one of two firms in the country, two planning firms, planning and GIS firms that have the expertise and are partners with Esri for ArcGIS Urban. So essentially, they're one of the leaders in the country in this realm, the GIS and planning realm. So that's why we've really focused on Housel Levine to help us with this. The other piece of it is going with Housel Levine, which is the GIS and the planning firm. The transition between the build-out of the model into zoning updates is going to be a seamless transition so that we can have them work, help us with the zoning update and the codes and writing all of that. So that's another reason we've, we're recommending going with Housel Levine. So I hope I didn't talk too long.
No, it was very interesting to learn how you ended up with Housel Levine. So thank you for explaining it. That's very helpful. I did personally a little research on this company, and I was very impressed with their community outreach and public engagement, aside from the fact that the modeling seems certainly something that I believe our community has certainly asked for. And as an elected official who needs to review and vote on land development, it would be extremely helpful to understand in a visual picture what it is we're talking about with zoning and planning. So I'm excited for this, and thank you for bringing it to the board for our consideration this evening.
David, I saw in the proposal, they have about 400 communities that are using this across the country. Are there any around here that you're aware of?
So we do, we are going to circle back with them and look for local examples, if we can find them. We have been researching map grants for planning, and Housel Levine is on that list of consultants. So that was like our clue that they've done work in Pennsylvania. So we really have to follow that trail and figure out where they did their work. But that's kind of the next step, is to really get more examples of things they've done, hopefully in Pennsylvania.
And the Argus Urban, I know that the term urban may.
So.
City.
Yeah, it's kind of a challenge with our field. You know, we're planners, and what do we call ourselves? What are we planning? We're not financial planners. You know, and I kind of view it as urban, city, regional, land use. I mean, essentially, we're land use planners. But I don't think it's as catchy a name as urban. So I think, you know, it could be ArcGIS land use, but I think urban sounds a little bit catchier.
Thank you.
I do have a comment. I'm really excited about this. I think it's a very creative and unique path for going forward for our township. I'm really excited. So thank you. And I particularly love the fact that there is community engagement. So people can give their input, they can view it, it's completely transparent and viewable for them. So I appreciate that. But I wanted to mention urban as well, because I had the same concern as you did, Commissioner Kelly. When I looked, it said smart city planning, made simple, visualized project citywide, urban planning firm based in Chicago. I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to be something we're not, because I don't think this township is urban.
Yeah, I mean, city planning and urban planning is kind of the big ticket. So, you know, and again, it's catchphrases, suburban planning doesn't sound as cool as urban planning. So I think there's, in addition, just to kind of carry on, there's some things public-wise that we can push out there. State College as an example of what they've done for land development tracking. So they kind of build them into the model so people can kind of see what's going on in the town. So that's the other flip side of this.
Just to add on to the comments, actually, I had the opportunity to take a course on ArcGIS through Penn State a while ago, and one of the modules, we look at ArcGIS Urban, and just the little bit that I got to see of it, that the technology is amazing, and it's applicable to any setting, not just urban, suburban, rural. Any inputs that you put in, you'll be able to generate numbers and results and visuals. So I think pairing that with a firm like Housel Levine, like you said, the seamless transition to, from the modeling to the zoning updates is just fantastic, really. Great work. Great work.
Commissioner Osborne?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Yes, I have a question for Mr. Dave Manhart. Dave, I don't know if you looked at this proposal in this detail, but I still have this question. So it looked like of the different elements, the hourly rate is different, varies, and somewhat significantly in some categories. Does, do those differences make sense to you?
Yes, so the different tasks involve different people.
Right.
So there's going to be different people working on each of the tasks. So it makes sense that the hourly rate, once it's per task, will be different, depending on which task it is, whether it's a GIS tech, you know, crunching the numbers, you know, you're not paying them as much as the project manager or the developer to come up with the programming to do the indicators. So there's a lot, there's a big team involved, and there's a large range of hourly rates.
Yeah, I mean, some of it varied from top to bottom, if I remember right, at least $50 an hour difference at points. Okay. But it makes sense to you?
Yes.
Based on your experience? Okay. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Or any questions from the public? Okay. We have given you the direction you need.
We'll come back with, when we're ready to execute a formal agreement.
Very good. Before we close this topic, I want to give a shout out, Dave, to your team, certainly for you, for leading for the landscape meeting last night. If anyone listening to this meeting was not able to attend last night, I encourage you to go to YouTube and view the meeting. We had four panelists, farmers. It was two hours of captivating information that I learned so much, and I thank you for bringing that here. The interaction between the panelists and with people in attendance and with you and Chris Stroller was just something I've never seen presented here in the township, and the direction that you're working through with the comp plan is just really incredible. So kudos, and thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. It was, it went really well. You know, it's one of those ideas that we cook up in the offices, and it came off pretty flawlessly. If the, I know Chris was working on a webpage for the Ag Resources page, so we'll have a separate page for each of the resources. I don't know if it's live yet, but it will be live soon, and the video will be embedded in that page. So if not, if it's not already live, it'll be live by tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Old Business. We don't have anything listed this evening, so Agenda Item 12, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity any member of the public to bring anything to the board. Sure.
You know, I come to meetings most every time, and people ask me questions about status of stuff. And I don't think we do a good job of addressing it. Like, old business to me, I did minutes for 40 minutes, old business might be where we stand on the self-storage journal, where do we stand on, you know, I got so much feedback on 309 project, after read the paper, it seems like be a nightmare. Or I had one guy who talked about the Bronstein project. So I don't know, once a month or some way we could be an update, just a quick status of still moving, when is Ridge going to be done, when is anything that we can pass on to the people? Because you bring topics up, but we don't always get feedback as to where it's staying. So that would be, that's the only thing I have. Thank you.
So one of the things that with this ArcGIS Urban, there's actually a plugin or an opportunity to do land development tracking. So as land developments are coming in, we can have a visual of what it's going to look like in addition to where they are in the schedule, when their last meeting was, when they're, yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, and it's been on my list of things to do for a while, so I'm looking forward to getting this going.
Excellent. Thank you for your comment, and Dave, thank you for follow-up.
That's why we're hiring a consultant.
Get it. Move along. If there's no public comment, is there any in the chat at all, Dave? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments. So moved. A second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session scheduled this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.